All right, I hope everybody's doing well and brave of you to come back as we are here in the middle of chapter nine. And in the thicket of like so much gloom and doom and but don't worry, it's just the beginning of it. And remember for all the gloom and doom, this is just the breaking down process on the way to renewal. And what we are reading is the ugly details of reclaiming the earth, right? This is judgment being poured out on all of the evil wicked rebellious image bearers of God. And that's difficult to stomach. It's hard for us to process and even imagine when we're dealing with, you know, a third of the earth or a third of mankind and all these other things. And as we bring it together, just to keep in view that even as we read a third, that is still a presentation of grace, an opportunity of repentance to two thirds. Not to mention the amount of time, the lifetime leading up to that point of judgment for that third to repent. They could have. So we see God's grace even in the midst of this judgment. And as we have the last few weeks teasing out the details and establishing shotguns against locusts are not a good idea, especially locusts from the bottomless pit. And rather than protecting our unsaved neighbors, the best thing to do is actually share the gospel with them. So there you go. That's my recap of the last few weeks. So let's go ahead and start with a word of prayer and then we will pick up where we left off in chapter nine. Lord God, we thank you for another opportunity to come together to study your word, to be receivers of a vision you gave your servant John 2,000 years ago. That even today we can be moved by these prophetic words, these apocalyptic visions, and moved not to fear but to action. Moved in security and comfort. To know that you are God, you are sovereign, that you love us, that you will even take vengeance for the persecution of your people. And that you are going to make all things new. As we read and discuss tonight, I pray that your spirit would guide and direct us through this time. Help us to understand the things that we are reading. But also transform us. Move us to action. To recognize how short life is and how long eternity will be. That now is the time that you are calling us to live for you. That now is the time you're calling us to evaluate our allegiances. And how we live. Father, I pray that this time brings you glory. And that each of our lives will bring you glory day in and day out. We love you and we thank you for the testimony of your word. And for this vision, we pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All right. So here we are picking up at verse 16, but just as kind of context, let's start reading verse 12. So we'll read through the end of chapter nine here, verse 21. And just to kind of have a broader context of what we're reading, right? So now even jumping back to verse one, we have the fifth angel sounding trumpet. And that's what brings about the locusts from the bottomless pit. So here we pick up at verse 12, "The first woe is past. Behold, two woes are still coming after these things. Then the sixth angel sounded, and I heard a voice from the four horns of the golden altar, which is before God. One saying to the sixth angel who had the trumpet, 'Release the four angels who are bound at the great river Euphrates.' And the four angels who had been prepared for the hour and day and month and year were released, so that they would kill a third of mankind. The number of the armies of the horsemen was two hundred million. I heard the number of them. And this is how I saw in the vision the horses and those who sat on them. The riders had breastplates the color of fire and of hyacinth and of brimstone. And the heads of the horses are like the heads of lions. And out of their mouths proceeded fire and smoke and brimstone. A third of mankind was killed by these three plagues, by the fire, smoke, and the brimstone which proceeded out of their mouths. For the power of the horses is in their mouths and in their tails. For their tails are like serpents and have heads, and with them they do harm. The rest of mankind who were not killed by these plagues did not repent of the works of their hands, so as not to worship demons and the idols of gold and of silver and of brass and of stone and of wood, which can neither see nor hear nor walk. And they did not repent of their murders nor of their sorceries nor of their immorality nor of their thefts." All right. Question?
Yes, are these all the same third? You know, at first we had a third.
Is this all the same third?
Yeah. People.
This is the first third that we've encountered? Because before it was a third of the earth or a third of the grass.
Okay.
So, yep. No, that's okay. And yes. With the bottomless pit and everything. Yep. Yeah. So you know, what is brimstone? Some people read that as sulfur. Some think that it's an element from our earth's core. And mind you, any ideas about the earth's core is just theory. So I think that's important to note as well. So it's the most updated science that we have. It's just theories right now. I mean, because like we've barely, I mean, gotten through the crust. So, yes, sir.
Beginnings maybe.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, David, would you mind bringing up a map? The Euphrates? Why not? And so we're just talking about the Euphrates here and how, I mean, kind of come in full circle with Abraham. And you know, where he was originally from, Ur the Chaldeans, right? And then he moves up the Euphrates with his family to Haran. And then it's from Haran that he crosses over, right? And literally becomes the Hebrew. So yeah, there you go. So Euphrates River, this is so modern day Iraq, Iran, here's Jordan, Syria. A little bit, I think Saudi Arabia here, right? And so Kuwait. Oh, Kuwait. So Euphrates River. And so I believe that you have Ur around this area here. And then Haran is up here in this region. And so he's actually coming down this way into, I'm sorry, up here. Coming down through Syria into Israel. So what would be the promised land? So, but yeah, so when we're talking about the army of the east, all of this is practically east of Israel. And by east, by northeast, right? Depending because of Euphrates River, as you see here, snakes all the way around to Turkey. So. There we go. Any other questions? Yeah. But it's interesting, just kind of full circle as like, I mean, one, we have the Tower of Babel from that land as well. And then it just kind of snowballs where that whole region, I mean, that becomes Babylon. Even the Parthian Empire or the army of Persia, the Empire of Persia, like they take over Babylon, all of that. Even the Assyrian Empire is just further north and west on the Euphrates River as well. So yeah, the Euphrates has not voted well for the land of Israel throughout history. And so that is kind of an interesting connection. So absolutely. Hey, look at that. Good warm up, guys with questions. That's right. Any others? Okay, all right. So, so picking up here, six angels sounds a trumpet. And all of a sudden, the golden altar starts talking. And a specific part of the altar, a horn. A horn of the golden altar starts talking after a trumpet is blown. Remember, this is a good point to remind everybody, this is a vision. This is maybe not a literal event, but is a vision that John is perceiving, right? And we're going to see little markers of that as this is happening. So, so the golden altar, which is before God, one saying to the sixth angel who had the trumpet, 'Release the four angels who are bound at the great river Euphrates.' So one, you have four angels who are actually bound. They're restrained at the river Euphrates. And we were talking a little bit about this last time. And so that is unique in and of itself. But we also were talking about how the word angels, a lot of times, anytime we hear that word angels, we're automatically thinking like, oh, the angel Gabriel or whatever. But that word just means messenger. And so we don't need to think seraphim or cherubim, right? Which are different than what we see being presented as angels. So just kind of keeping those distinctions, right? Now, as we have these four angels or messengers, they have been prepared for the hour and day and month and year, were released, so that they would kill a third of mankind. So they had been saved for this specific moment. Hence why John is recording this. This wasn't just haphazardly, this was planned. These were, these messengers are messengers of death. Of carnage, of destruction. That is the message they bring. This is what they were created for. And they were released at this very specific time. So they didn't break from their bonds, they were released to do it. So who is the one in control throughout all of this? It's God. Yeah, God. So because a lot of time, I mean, imagine if we didn't have this vision and we were seeing this level of destruction take place upon the earth. Imagine, I mean, just imagine with the flood or anything else, right? I mean, any of these global disasters, you would be tempted to think that God isn't in control. But just the opposite. I'll give you a few seconds to reconcile your theology, right? It's like processing, you know? Let's integrate this and like, oh, okay, right? And you know, for a culture that has gotten away from the fear of the Lord, this, like, these four angels are in his back pocket. Yes? We have a competition of questions up here. Yes? Sure. Yeah, 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 yeah. So how does basically sovereignty and free will exist in moments like this? And then how does that kind of overflow into like other situations of life? Yeah. No, 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 no. And so what we see in the text here, he is pulling the string, right? Of releasing these angels, messengers to wreak havoc and to kill a third of mankind. Now, what third? And like what we saw before with the locusts, who was it that had the seal of God and who was it that did not, right? And so the difference is those who have put their faith in Jesus Christ. Now, people can read the Bible a number of different ways. That's why we have different theological perspectives on it. I come from a perspective that believes that we have free will to choose. That when we talk about election or predestination, that that is about groups. And that in our free will, we choose which group that we belong to. God has created a way for salvation, whereas before there was not. By creating a way, he has therefore created two groups. And so that is our opportunity to choose which one. Now, is any of this unbeknownst to God? Knowledge does not necessarily mean he is causing something. It doesn't mean that he is making something happen. So I would draw that distinction. Actually, just the opposite. I would think that God has created every opportunity for us to come to salvation. I mean, the free gift, right? That the gospel presents is there for each and every one of us. Paul even goes back to like creation itself. So I think that as we're talking about this, we can see the certain strings that God is pulling, but then also the ones that he's not. Because remember, this is judgment upon not everybody that believes in him and obeys him. It's upon everybody that's rebelled against him. He's not making them rebel. They have chosen to rebel. They have chosen to receive this judgment in the same way that they could have chose to obey him. And so even by the time we get to verse 20 and 21 of this chapter, we're seeing that like they refuse to stop worshiping these materials. They refuse to put away their sorceries and, you know, repent of their immorality, right? And everything else. And so that, those aren't strings that God's pulling. But we see that like sovereignty is not happening to pull every string. It's that nobody contests his rulership. His rule. Like that's literally what sovereignty means is rule, right? His ability to rule. Satan contested by tradition, by some understanding, Satan contested God's rule. We're not seeing any of that here. And I think that argument has already been laid to rest the moment Satan was kicked out of heaven. And so now that is why, that is his motivation to wreak havoc on God's creation. That's a string that can't be pulled, right? By anybody else. God is the one that chooses to do that. That is his sovereignty. Does that make sense? And it's important for us to talk about that because, because we're getting into some really heavy stuff. We are slipping into the deep end here. And if we maybe have a skewed understanding of this, if we believe, like if we just go hyper Calvinist here, all of a sudden, like this reads, David, you can edit this at some point, but this gets really sadistic. Because then we have people tormented for five months that God created not to repent. That when he wrote everything out from the beginning, he didn't want those people to repent. And now we're going further and he wants to see all of these people destroyed because, because that's how he wrote it before the beginning. Oh, anybody else feeling sick?
My head hurts.
And that might like, like, and I'm sure we could, you know, if you subscribe to some thought around that, like we could definitely talk through that, but that's where it gets uncomfortable. That's usually where somebody might default to like, oh, but that's the mystery of God and everything else. That's, that is, you cannot use that as a top out here because that we are reading about direct judgment. God is taking vengeance upon a rebellious earth, upon a rebellious creation, his image bearers. It has reached the pinnacle of rebellion and we're going to see that in the next few chapters. When the beasts are revealed and everything else. And that even at the point of utter destruction, it's like they're going to rebel even harder. Worshipping their idols, continuing in their wickedness. And at what point do they think it's a good idea, right? And so, but like from our view of God's sovereignty or control, right? How much is he getting credit for? Because I think the text is making it very clear at what point he is doing something. But then there's a whole lot that it doesn't say that he's doing. Does that make sense? That like, there's a whole lot here that people are responsible for. That's why there's the seal of God. And then we'll read, you know, and in chapters to come, more of the role of this 144,000 of the believers. So, okay, that was a little tangent, wasn't it? So any questions to that? Yeah.
That's pretty much rubbish then in your opinion?
Ah, well, I would just say that a lot of times we try to translate what we read and, oh, yes, yes. So, you know what? I'm going to save that one because just trying to stay more in line with the text. Yeah. So question was about the Holy Spirit and more of a quickening. Actually, is that, is that from the Highlander? I was going way back for that one. Anybody else? Yeah. So there can only be one, right? There can be only one. There you go. So, but yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that one after. Okay.
But in this case, it needs to do their job.
That's right. And that's, and that's why like, does, you know, do you believe in sovereignty? Yes, I absolutely do. And nobody's going to thwart this. God is always going to get his way, right? And yeah, absolutely. I mean, for, I mean, it even says, for the hour, for the hour, right? They've been prepared for the hour and day and month and year. Hour, day, month, and year. Like that is spooky. That is the source of nightmares right there because like, what's the hour? What's the day? What's the month? What's the year? Like it's already marked on God's calendar. And like, nobody's going to stop that. So, yeah, and that's one of the few like timetables that we have referenced in Revelation. So like, I think a lot of times, you know, we talked about the weeks and everything else. That's going back to Daniel, right? And so, but in this, like, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
So I guess what Bam people have done.
Yeah. Okay. So, so the question is like, as we're reading this and we're talking specifically about verse 15, "And the four angels who had been prepared for the hour and day and month and year were released, so that they would kill a third of mankind." So is this an hour? Is this a, is he speaking kind of metaphorically as like, because there's all these other circumstances have built up to this point, they have been made for that hour? If it only said the hour or that moment, I would agree with that. But the fact that he unpacks hour and month, right, and year, like, that's getting really specific. And so I think that is, I mean, and remember, this is not when everything just gets wrapped up. This is just like knocking rebellious humanity down to a third, down by a third, right? That's it. And so if nothing else, to get the attention of the other two thirds. But sadly, we have verses 20 and 21, they don't repent. So I would take this as a very like specific point. That God, in his knowledge, knows that like at this point, after these other things have happened, will make this happen. Will release these four messengers. So, yep. So, but once again, as I've said numerous times before, if you disagree with me, that's totally fine. And it may not go down as I say. Because in all of this, right? Like how much are we taking literally? How much are we taking, you know, as just part of the vision? And we're receiving the emotional piece of this, right? That is supposed to move us to action as John is writing to these seven churches and really driving us to like get out there and share the gospel, even, even though Rome is ready to persecute everybody, even though we see people losing homes and families and everything else. As we're reading this, oh, a third of mankind. We need to get out there because we don't know that day or that hour, that day or month or year. Good question. Do we see this kind of language of the hour, day, month, and year in reference to anything else in? In the Bible or otherwise? In the apocrypha? Boy, I would have to, I'd have to look that one up. I'm trying to think. One come to mind? Anybody?
I'm sorry, I'm other than the Bible.
Right, forecast. Yeah, yeah. God forecasting his own day. He's calling the shots. So, that's right.
Or it could be that this is your last 10,000 breath.
Yeah. No, that's a good point. No man knows the day or the hour of the son's return, except for the father in heaven. So we have an inverse correlation, right? So, so the question is after this ball starts rolling. So, so the question is, after this ball starts rolling, how much time is between these events? And this goes back to what we were saying the last few weeks, um, last, you know, couple of months is that there are different perspectives, different theories on how this is laid out. Some people read it completely chronological, right? So one of these events is happening in succession. Others read this, other scholars read this as maybe a compounding effect where we are talking about the same period of time. And so you have the seal judgments overlaid with trumpets and bowls and everything else. And so we have this really intense period of judgment that is going to just happen. Now, what is the timetable between each of those things happening? I don't know. And that could be a rough month, it could be a rough year, you know? Or it's stretched over seven years or 70 years, you know? We really, we don't know, there's just a lot of theories around that. And so now, you know, if we go back to Daniel, we go back to, you know, other, you know, pieces like that, that's, you know, some people do read it as, you know, seven years.
That's what it is?
Sure, as chaotic as the world is right now, how will we know, or whoever's alive at this point, know that like, this is it? I don't know about you, but if there's locusts flying around that are with scorpion tails and you don't see anybody dying, but sick for five months. No, but, but really, I mean, you know, and there's already been some really odd things that have happened and very like supernatural things happening, right? Even just beyond the four horsemen, as we start moving on, things are really intensifying. And we see that. And so now, and that's another whole thing instead of like a compounding, we have maybe more of a spiraling effect, right? Where some of these things are happening in kind of different sectors, different places, different parts of the world, but maybe not in consecutive order, right? So, um, but yeah, if nothing else, like a third of mankind drops. And whether you actually see these angels, messengers, um, killing people, right? Like, yikes. But then we quickly transition, and here's my segue back. And the four angels who had been prepared for the hour and day and month and year were released so that they would kill a third of mankind. Verse 16, "The number of the armies of the horsemen was 200 million. I heard the number of them." Oh, wait a second. I thought we were just talking about like four angels. So, let's see what Mounts has to say about that. So quite abruptly, we learn of an unbelievably large cavalry force about to invade the land. The number that John hears, who could count such a throng, is two myriads of myriads. So twice 10,000 times 10,000. So literally like from the Greek, we have two myriads of myriads. So twice 10,000 times 10,000. Attempts to reduce this expression to arithmetic miss the point. A double myriad of myriads is an indefinite number of incalculable immensity. John's eschatological steeds breathe out fire and sulfur and have serpent-like tails with head, with lethal heads. So the idea here, instead of us just reading and being like, oh, 200 million, right? And so some people have even theorized that, oh, this is talking about China because they, they're, they're the only ones that could field an army this large. Has anybody else heard that theory? Okay. So it misses the point. It misses the point. And much like with the locusts, and I mean, you know, and this was something that, you know, everybody was really wrestling with, right? Was one, it was like, we were like, oh, the locusts sound horrible. Oh, they're stinging the people that don't have the seal of God. And like, and all of a sudden, we're all thinking about our loved ones who don't know the Lord. And so like our heart is kind of, you know, being rendered for, for them, we're just, oh, no. And so that emotional response, that is exactly what John is going for here. So now, as we're reading this, we're reading about two times, like the myriads times, you know, myriads of myriads. An incalculable number let loose to wreak havoc on the earth, to kill a third of mankind. And so just by hearing that, the overwhelming number, there's nothing you can fight here. That's what's being said. You cannot stop this. You cannot save yourself. As one who does not know the Lord, there's no surviving that within that third. If you are found within their path, you're done for. You're reading the same text I am. And it doesn't, and it doesn't say that. Unlike what we see with, you know, the first woe, uh, where repentance is available, right? Actually, just the opposite here at the end of this judgment, they refuse, they refuse to repent. The ones who survive refuse to repent. So that almost answers the question, right? Is that even at this point, they are refusing to turn from their wicked ways. So, yeah, question? Let's see. I heard the number of them? Yeah. So, so as John is seeing this, this huge group of horsemen, right? Riding towards him, all of a sudden he hears the number. So whether it was the altar itself speaking, or which, that's the last incident we have here. And I heard a voice from the four horns of the golden altar, which is before God. So is it the altar that is saying, you know, myriads of myriads, a double myriad of myriads? And is that significant? Because once again, in the midst of some of this imagery, we see precise numbers. So in the verse before, we have specific hour and day and month and year. And here we have a specific number for that. Mystery, I have no idea. Yeah, no, it's, it's an excellent question. But he heard the number. So it wasn't like he was just, oh, boy, that's a lot. That looks like just a double myriad of myriads. There's a voice that says it. So why is that significant? Nobody could believe it.
But now we, now we do have that possibility.
Sure.
Of that, that's a, that's a real number.
Yeah. Yeah. So, so the point being, uh, heard that there wasn't a commentary written, uh, especially around this verse until the late 1800s. Because there weren't that many people on the earth, nobody could grasp that number, seeing that many horsemen, right? You know, on the field of battle. Yeah, that's interesting.
Do we know who that 200 million are?
Do we know who that 200 million are? People have theories. Like I said, you know, as I addressed before, many people think that that's China because they're the only ones that could field an army that size, right? And they happen to be in the east. But I, I think what we're seeing here, um, we have the reference to four angels. Who do the angels represent, right? If we're just purely taking everything in a representative fashion, like, you know, and then we have this number, double myriad of myriads.
You know, wondering whether or not they're believers or.
Oh, it doesn't.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say, yeah. So.
Just repent based on just what happens.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we want you, please save us. The Jesus guy, yeah, we believe in him.
If they're still alive, they can repent. That's right.
Then they say, no, we don't want to believe you, we don't want to.
So the opportunity is there, right? And to, to your question, like the opportunity is there, we just don't see them doing that, right? Much like what we see with Pharaoh and Egyptians, like, and namely just Pharaoh, even after the death of the firstborn.
And the other funny thing was.
And then he goes back on that, repents. But that's a whole different matter for another time. That's right. No, that's an excellent point.
Right now, we're sending more Chinese people to heaven. So, it's going to come from somewhere. I don't know, China is not necessarily my, my.
So, so, so the point being made here and for everybody on YouTube, because this is, this is a worthy point. There's actually currently, uh, more believers in China than there are in the United States. And so when we start maybe demonizing certain groups of people, certain countries, um, good little gut check there in the kingdom of God, right? That God has representation, his kingdom is global, is all over the world. And it's not American. And it doesn't just look like you and I. So it's, it's important to remember that. And because a lot of times we just tend, we want to read this from where we're sitting, from an American perspective. But that's why we did so much of that context work in the beginning, to understand that John is writing to seven churches in what is modern day Turkey. Modern day Turkey, right? So it wasn't even a group of people in Israel. They were Christians in Asia Minor. So, absolutely. No, that's great. So there's another point here for Mounts. They spread out as far as the eye can see, who could escape the onslaught of such a gigantic force? The specter of a huge hostile cavalry had always been a source of terror for the Jewish people. In the assumption of Moses, and this is apocryphal work, we read of a king from the east. So many think that this, this would have been Nebuchadnezzar, who comes against them and whose cavalry shall cover their land. So the assumption of Moses, chapter three, verse two. The Parthian threat would intensify this fear, right? So even in John's time, Parthia was still a threat. Thus the figure of a great army of horsemen riding in from beyond their boundary supplies the vivid imagery for John's second woe. Once again, the impact of the vision is diminished by speculative attempts to provide theological equivalence for specific items. Better to experience the vision as a whole than to trivialize it by excessive interpretation of details. So just falling back on the idea that as we're reading it and the overwhelming number, the onslaught of such a force coming after you. Now, remember, like, as we're reading this, you're probably thinking, oh, I could probably, you know, I could go down to the armory and get a tank or whatever else and take on all those horsemen. No, no, no. Put yourself in like ancient times, 2,000 years ago, and the best you can do is match them with a horse and wealthy enough, like get a chariot. You're still taking on 200 million, right? There's no surviving this. If you are caught in their path, you are going to meet your maker. So that, that overwhelming feeling, there's no escaping that. So if you were somebody who really just made yourself out to be your own God and relying on your own strength, it will fail you. That is the point in this, right? Even if you were a king and had your own empire, 200 million would still wipe you out. 200 million horsemen would have wiped out the Roman Empire. So that's the, the scale in which what John is seeing is so overwhelming. And now, there's parts of this that actually come up later on as we have the Huns and later the Mongols. And they believed that this was a judgment of God. So that's a fun little history fact. And at those times, people thought it was the end too.
240,000 horsemen.
240,000, that's right, that's right. They were short by a few zeros, but whatever. So, yeah.
Standing for it probably seemed like a couple of million.
Right, exactly. Yeah. So, so there you go. All right, now we're going to get into a description of the horsemen. Uh-oh, I heard an uh-oh. Uh-oh, here we go. That's our recess is over. That's right. That's right. So here we are picking up with verse 17. And just immediately following John communicating, I heard the number of them. He then says, "And this is how I saw in the vision, the horses and those who sat on them. The riders had breastplates the color of fire and of hyacinth and of brimstone. And the heads of the horses are like the heads of lions, and out of their mouths proceed fire and smoke and brimstone." Now, only here in the book of Revelation does John specifically indicate that his revelations are being mediated to him in a vision. This is the only place. So the expression, "In my vision," is not a superfluous addition, but an indication that his descriptions are apt to be highly symbolic in nature. So think of Peter's vision. And anytime somebody's having a vision, right? Daniel's visions, and think how symbolic they are. So while it's possible to understand the verse as indicating that both the riders and their mounts wore breastplates, it is better to limit the armor to the riders alone. The breastplates were of red, blue and yellow to match the fire, smoke and sulfur that was coming out of the mouths of the horses. It is difficult to determine whether the breastplates were of three colors each or whether each breastplate was of a single color, some red, some blue, some yellow. In either case, the overall impression would be the same. There's a scholar by the name of Sweet, apparently feels that the breastplates were actually made of fire. While the Greek text would allow this, it seems unnecessarily literal. But that's just fuel for your nightmares. So. So the New King James translation describes the colors of the breastplates as fiery red, hyacinth blue and sulfur yellow.
The fire or the sulfur?
That's an idea. Either it would be one solid color or all three represented. Hyacinth normally referred to the deep blue color of the jasonth. But here it probably indicates the dusky blue color of a sulfurous smoke. Should be noted that the riders play no active part in carrying out the plague. This is accomplished by the horses. Their description in the following verses is grotesque, to say the least. Perhaps the most terrifying aspect of the horses is their lion's heads. You can also see for reference the lion's teeth of the locust in the preceding vision. So that's an interesting connection, right? Which symbolizes cruelty and destruction. From their mouths proceeds fire, smoke and sulfur. This feature argues. This feature argues their demonic origin, but let's be clear, nowhere in this is demonic activity mentioned." So within this, we can also figure that it does not symbolize tanks, cannons, battleships, or anything of modern warfare. No helicopters. That was in the previous section, right, the locust. "The plague anticipates the eternal torment that awaits the devil." You can see for reference, chapter 20, verse 10. "as well as his demonic cohorts," chapter 19, verse 20, "and all who bear the mark of the beast," which we'll get into in chapter 14. Verse 10. "Fire-breathing monsters were common in mythology. John's source is probably Leviathan, the sea monster, of Job, chapter 41. Firebrands stream from his mouth, smoke pours from his nostrils," verses 19 and 20. Job, chapter 41. So the cavalry here, as a whole, recall Habakkuk's description of the Chaldeans, "who were to invade Judah with horses swifter than leopards and fiercer than wolves." Habakkuk, chapter 1, verse 8. That's where we're going next? "A third of mankind was killed by these three plagues, by the fire, and the smoke, and the brimstone, which proceeded out of their mouths." So the fire, smoke, and sulfur are intended to be taken as three separate plagues. "The result is that a third part of mankind is killed. The scene is reminiscent of the burning sulfur that fell upon Sodom and Gomorrah in divine judgment," Genesis, chapter 19, verse 24, and also referenced in Jude, chapter 7. "The first woe brought torment; the second woe brought death." Torment, and then here, death. Anybody have a question on 18? Yeah?
Maybe, very close, I mean, there's some differences going on here.
Right.
Yeah, but...
Yeah, especially when we get to the tails, but the head of lions, and... Yeah, and then you look at the rest of the body, and you're just like, what is that?
Yeah, they had some creatures in it, had like, very different forms of things, like, the talons of unique, yeah, and the tails of a serpent and what have you.
Which really, it almost takes appearance of a griffin.
It does, yeah.
So...
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, and, and so, how much does... But then again, you know, yeah, so, so, we don't have John naming what he sees, which a lot of these, you know, from, from ancient times, he would have been familiar with the imagery, and there could, they could have been identified. But what he's describing is like a whole new thing. And so, that's the interesting part of it, that it does have similarities to maybe what we see on the walls of Babylon, the ancient city of Babylon, and you can look those up, those are readily available. A lot of those have heads of lions, and then the rest of the body, it's just an amalgam of all kinds of different animals. And, so, yeah, how much does that play into this? But we know that even just from the last verse, "and I saw in my vision," right? So he is being shown these things, and thereby describing it. That's what also makes significant, when he hears a certain thing, like, double the myriad of myriads, oh, oh, I better write that down. That's, that's important, right? And he even makes note, "I heard this." So everything else that we're reading is a description according to John. God's giving the vision, and the Holy Spirit is leading him, and whether he is recording this, writing this, after he wakes up, or in the midst of it, we don't know, is this a trance-like, you know, state? We don't have any idea, right? You know, once again, you could reference back to Peter's vision, and where he was up on the roof, waiting for lunch, and basically falls into a trance. Falls into a trance-like state, and sees this sheet being let down from heaven. And he wakes up, and he goes downstairs, right? And that's his history, but, you know, and there's a very, there was a lot of symbolism to that vision, right? So as we're reading this, it's important to kind of keep those things in mind. Because, I mean, just keeping track, we've already read about angels, horsemen, and rider, right? Horse and rider, and plagues. So we've got three fascinating elements, all in the mix here. And where does one begin and the other, you know, end? How much do they overlap? Are we talking about the same thing, layered? Is one producing another? Because, I mean, John's switching gears pretty quick. And some of the things that are represented here, like, oh, those are plagues. So they have the color of these, the horses are breathing these out, but yet they're identified as a plague. So there's a lot of mixed language here. So just to recognize that. Now, we get to, yes? Right, and so, so, so what Pablo's referring to is the chiasic structure between these verses, and so what, anytime there's a chiasic structure, look at the hinge point, look at the pivot point, and that's gonna be the main point of that section. Everything builds up, and is let down from that point. So think of it as like an arrow driving to that. And what's that main point? A third of mankind dying. So, absolutely. So it just adds that greater emphasis to death happening. So, verse 19. "For the power of the horses is in their mouths and in their tails; for their tails are like serpents and have heads, and with them they do harm." So the power of the horses to kill lies entirely in their mouths. "Like the locusts, however, they have the power to hurt, and this power is in their tails. The tails are like snakes and have heads." Many suggestions have been offered for this unusual feature in the Great Altar of Zeus at Pergamum, which, remember seeing pictures of that? You know, when we were going through the churches and the church at Pergamum? "The legs of the giants were in the form of snakes. In the ancient myth of Amphibena had a serpent's head at either end. Some see a reference to the Parthian practice of shooting arrows behind them in flight." So once again, trying to take it in a more literal sense. "Others refer to the horse tails formerly carried by the Turkish pasas as symbols of authority." So, once again, just trying to anchor this, like, is this truly symbolic in more of a mythological sense? Or is this like, oh, we could see this as the Parthian rider, like, leaning back and shooting behind them? So, from the front, or just as lethal, shooting backwards as well? So if you think about cavalry, as they're riding through, it's like, oh, they've already rode past us, I survived, yay, oh no, they're shooting behind themselves, you know, so...
So then the one question, vision and forget those two?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, do we take, when it mentions serpent, so, do we just start cross-referencing serpent throughout the Bible? I think that's, so, in my approach, and just having that principle of, like, John just saying, hey, here's this vision, and there is not a theological charge behind this mention, right? There's sometimes like, you know, whether it be in Jesus's teaching, or we see in other places, like, a serpent being mentioned, where you're like, oh, well, let's cross-reference that, right? But when John is seeing this, it's attached to a horse. Like, the horse's tail is like a serpent. So, I, that would, I think that would lend itself into like torturing the text to try to make it say something that it's not. And so, it's, it's hard enough, we don't need to like, load it up with all kinds of other theological stuff as well, so... That's just me. I'm sure, if you wanted to do that, for every description of the text, you could write so many different books and commentary, I'm just kidding, so... So, so Mounts goes on, "Is impossible to say what prompted this particular feature in John's vision. Even if the source could be isolated, it would not necessarily throw much light on the interpretation, for John develops the imagery along lines uniquely his own. That the horses had tails like snakes is perhaps another way of emphasizing the demonic origin of the horses." So, once again, this is where like, Mounts and I would part ways. There's nothing mentioned that's demonic. So, "It may be that this vision is linked with Ezekiel's prophecy of the invasion of Israel by Gog," Ezekiel, chapter 38 and 39. "Coming after Israel had been punished and restored, the invasion symbolized the immense reserve power of evil in view, of which there can be no security until the final victory of God." John adapts the Gog tradition to show that the demonic army from beyond Euphrates, once again, Mounts, is necessarily precisely because the Roman world has tried to find security in that which is not God. So what was the main contender with Rome? Parthia. So, John is, you know, so this, Mounts is maintaining that Parthia could be in view within this vision. So whatever inference may be drawn from the description, John's concern at the moment is to relate in a scatological vision that portrays a plague of death brought upon people by fire-breathing monsters from the underworld. So, double the nightmare, right? Hey, if it's not Parthia, it's just these beings from the underworld that will breathe out these three plagues to kill a third of mankind. Either way you look at it, it's bad news, people. So, trust in Jesus. So, take Jesus as your Lord and Savior. So, verse 20. Because now, we get to the result of this, to the other two-thirds. "The rest of mankind, who were not killed by these plagues..." So once again, plural, so we don't even have, it's not like a singular attack. It's not a singular, like, cavalry charge, and roaming the earth and killing a third. There's three plagues that are continually identified. So look at where we started, "four angels boundeth Euphrates", and look at where we've landed, these plagues. If you're confused, good, that's a good, that's a good humble start to approaching the rest of this. But, here is the worst part of all. So, we just read about these plagues, fire, and smoke, and brimstone, this horrible description of the horse and the rider, and even just four angels, bound at Euphrates, like, just for this moment, this specific moment, to be let loose upon the earth. That moment could be now, or tomorrow, or now. And so, so even, like, there's all this nightmarish language, but here, in verse 20, we've come to the worst part of all. "The rest of mankind, who were not killed by these plagues, did not repent of the works of their hands. So as not to worship demons, and the idols of gold, and of silver, and of brass, and of stone, and of wood, which can neither see, nor hear, nor walk." Let me also put this out there, that if at any point, how confusing would it be if the locust or the horseman and rider were identified as demonic? Because here, they were not, they were failing to repent of worshiping demons. Could you imagine if they started worshiping the locust? Could you imagine if they started wor- worshiping the, the horseman and rider? You know, the, the lion head, and the serpent tail, and all this other stuff? That would just give fuel, because, oh, look how powerful they are, and, oh, this is real, and, you know, I'm not gonna worship your invisible god, but these things, these have power. And I survived because I worshiped them. Ooh, ouch, right? And so, so, once again, as we're going through this, let's be careful, like, what we're referring to as demonic, and what is not. And we see both of these entities in the fifth and sixth trumpet, as being from God. These are His messengers, these are His creatures, that He's reserved for this time. And the whole point is to bring people to repentance. But, the other two-thirds of mankind refuse to repent. "They did not repent of the works of their hands, or the worship of demons, and the idols of gold, silver, brass, and stone, and of wood, which can neither see, nor hear, nor walk." "So those who were not killed by the plagues of fire, smoke, and sulfur repented, repented not of their idolatry, or the conduct that accompanied it. Once the heart is set in its hostility toward God, not even the scourge of death will lead people to repentance. The work of their hands that people chose to worship rather than God are the idols of gold, silver, brass, stone, and wood. So the folly of idolatry is a common theme in Jewish literature." So we see that throughout. "Gods of wood and stone cannot see, or hear, or eat, or smell," Deuteronomy, chapter 4, verse 28. "They have eyes but do not see, ears but do not hear, and feet but do not walk," Psalm 115, verses 5 through 7. "At the same time, heathen idolatry was considered to be worship rendered to demons." So there's the overlap. "Jubilees speaks of the people of Ur being assisted by malignant spirits in making graven images and unclean simulacra." That's Jubilees, chapter 11, verse 4. Now, mind you, if you're just joining us, so, as I'm referencing apocryphal works, pseudographic works, like, this is just the writings contemporary to John, much as we have read, read Christian literature, or other commentaries, and other stories, different things like that, this would have been a part of John's own repertoire, right? He would have read many of these things, and not taken them as inspired as scripture. But they still would have been read, and he would have remembered those and understood those. And how interesting would that be, if he saw an overlap in what he, the vision that he was receiving, right? So, so just saying, we're not taking this as gospel, but it's interesting where we see that overlap, even 2,000 years later, so... "In following after strange gods, the Israelites had sacrificed to demons," Deuteronomy 32, verse 17. Deuteronomy 32, verse 17. "In the New Testament, Paul writes that the Gentiles sacrificed to demons, not to God." 1 Corinthians, chapter 10, verse 20. "And although one-third of humankind is massacred by the demonic cavalry," once again, for Mounts, "those that remain continue to worship the very malignant forces that are bringing about their destruction. Such is the delusion of sin." So, verse 21. So, verse 21. Oh, that's good. So, the question is, as we read here in verse 20, "The rest of mankind, who were not killed by these plagues, did not repent of the works of their hands." So, the question is, well, wait, are there any believers? So, we have a couple different ideas here. One, is that they're, the, the believers were already taken out. But, if you turn the page, we're gonna see two witnesses, we're gonna see, there's still a ministry of 144,000. But, that's reading it in chronological order, right? So, by the, when I'm done talking, you'll be even more confused, don't worry. And so, so, so that's an idea, is that, potentially, the believers are still there, they just don't need to repent, because they had already repented, and they have the seal of God, and so, they have their mission to carry out. So, they're not factored in as the ones receiving judgment. So, they are there for the purpose of ministry, and so, God has reserved them, protected them for that. The other option is that they were taken out. And so, whether that falls in line with rapture theory, or if they are part of the group that died. Now, how would that connect with God raising up, you know, unleashing these, this judgment upon His own people? So, that doesn't really drive. So, I would go with the believers, those who have been sealed. Because remember, we just read about them at the first part of this chapter. They were protected from that judgment. As this is going along with the next trumpet, have they been protected from this as well? We don't have that identified, but the focus has shifted from those who have been sealed, to those who are now receiving judgment. Those who failed to repent. And it's kind of, we have that kind of bookends within this chapter, of the fifth and sixth judgment, where here is this five months of torment, where anybody could repent. But then, the sixth trumpet happens, and how does, what do we read at the end of this? Oh, "Those who survived refused to repent." So, what's in view here, at the end of this chapter, or the second half, is not the, those who've been sealed by God. So, now, how much time has elapsed between these? We don't know what has happened, so.
Do we take the rest of mankind to be literal? Or the all, and that it's not necessarily all here?
Right, yeah. Do we take all of mankind literally, like some of these numbers and figures? Yeah, we don't have to, right? And, and I don't think anybody's gonna scrutinize the numbers when this stuff is happening. Just saying, if they're going that deep into this, and they still haven't repented, man.
But I think so do it, so.
I think that would be, yeah, another topic. But yes, so, so, as what Paul is subscribing to, is the demonic activity, like, that he saw in that worship of idols. Absolutely. So, but yeah, as far as taking numbers literally and figuratively, that's what makes pointing out the 200 million that much more fascinating, is that, whether it was the altar speaking, or another entity speaking, like, why that number, right? And remember, it's literally just a double myriad of myriads. So, yeah. Like, if I keep hounding that, it's because like, I'm thinking, like, man, if I hear that number, for anything, I'm just gonna be like, huh. Okay, all right, let, let, try to connect some dots here, right? So, anyways. So, verse 21. Oh, yeah. Yeah, so, so, if we were, if we were there, and we saw, like, let's just take this full-hilt, like, literally, okay? So, horsemen and rider, horses have like lion heads, their tails are like serpents, right? And everywhere they go, like, they are like killing people. So, so, we're watching the news, like, we're, and it's just popping up, and, I mean, so, have we, eight billion people?
Eight billion.
Eight billion, right? So, what, what's a third of that?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, right? Two and a half billion people. Like that. And let's just say, let's just give it a week. Or we can even stretch out. Let's say, over a period of a month, these creatures, and, once again, taking it literally, 200 million of them, are just riding across the land. And, you know, we have all of our modern technology, and we're like, it's popping up on Twitter, or Instagram, and, you know, and everybody's like, oh, and, you know, there's even YouTube videos of popping up around it, and like, you know, somebody left their phone playing as they got struck down, and like crazy stuff, right? What do you do? What do you do? And you know who they're coming after. Because what's also being reported, is maybe, like, all the Christians, this persecuted group are surviving. What do you do? Do you just come to church to pray? Do you that much ardently, like, and you know that they are sweeping, they are heading west? And there's already reports that like, the ocean's not even stopping them, that like miraculously, like, they've already landed on the coast of Brazil. What do you do? We, you go after that list of all the people who don't know Christ, and you are knocking on their door, whether it's 3:00 AM, and you're saying, hey, this was all prophesied, John saw this 2,000 years ago, and look who it's for, and look what happens. They're the ones that like, don't repent of these things. So, throw out your Buddha, throw out all your Hindu gods, throw out your lucky charms, whatever. Repent, repent, right? And if you have to take them through four spiritual laws, or Roman road, or whatever else, or just sit down and read the Gospel of John with them, do it. After you read chapter nine to them. Cause then, they wouldn't even believe it, right? They're like, oh, that sounds like what I saw, or, you know, whatever. That sounds like what's on the news. And let me tell you, like, a body count like that is gonna get people's attention. Sadly, it's not gonna bring them to repentance. But that's still, that doesn't negate our responsibility to ministry. And that's the thing, like, that's what we're all called to. Like, we are not just called to occupy a building once a week. That is not what we've been saved for. We have been saved to go and share this message, to further the kingdom of God. That is what we have been commissioned to do, right? It's a gift that we've been given to share with others. Like, that is the most important part of the Book of Revelation, that I think John was saying to those churches, that, hey, even though persecution is coming, and persecution is at your door, don't stop doing what you're doing. And it's a natural warning not to get comfortable in your fellowship. Don't be happy with just the holy huddle. Get out there, and share this information with everybody else, and, yeah, let's mobilize. And we're not doing it by sword, or gun, or anything else. We're doing it with truth, and in love, calling people to repentance, right? So, it's not just the Jesus that died to atone for your sins, so go on sinning. Like, so don't miss that part of this chapter either. Repent. It's not Jesus as Krishna, it's not Jesus as a prophet of Islam. It's not Jesus plus all these other gods. It's repent of all of those things. Trash them. It is only Jesus, right? And remember back to Revelation 5, He's the one bearing the crown. He's the one that had been, has been given authority over the earth, and to exact this judgment.
What about mainline denominations?
I was totally gonna make a joke, of as you see them sweeping west from the Euphrates, and you see these Christians that are alive, and you're like, oh, but wait, that can't be right, he's orthodox. Cause you know somebody would do that. Or, oh, that's a Catholic. No way, that's impossible. Can't be just leaving the Christians alive, cause that's not a Christian, according to my definition. That's 2,000 years of church history, you're... So, so it's just something for us to like, really look at. And it's something for even within the body of Christ. I'm not speaking anybody into heaven, and I'm not speaking anybody into like, who's got the right path. That's why we need to stick with what God's word says, all of it. And as we are preaching repentance to the world, we are within the church. We're looking at our own lives, our own families, and our own fellowship, and saying, are we doing what God has called us to do? Cause if we're not, man, we shouldn't be throwing stones anyways. So, man, we, we have a mission. Let's do our very best to like, get this right. One life to live for each and every one of us. So, even if we don't see lion-headed horses running around with serpent tails, breathing out plagues, we still have a job to do. We still have that level of urgency to live with, and to share, and to, to really see, like, to be disciple makers, right? Because that's what we, as disciples of Jesus Christ, have been called to do. So, there you go. That is a challenge for each and every one of you, and that's not just coming from me. That's from Jesus. That's the Great Commission, and that's for each and every one of us. And that's why 2,000 years later, we can still call ourselves Christians. But as we see things popping off all over the world, that's not the time for us to be hiding in basements or bunkers. We've gotta get out there. We've gotta share the good news of Jesus Christ with everybody, and call them to repentance, to transformation. Okay, I'll get off my soapbox now.
So, I have a toothache. I'm not asking you.
According to that theory, there's a couple of different points where they believe that the rapture could have taken place.
Okay, but basically, before this happens, all believers are raptured into heaven, according to that theory.
According to that theory.
Right, okay.
Well, not necessarily. And that's what I was saying before, where, you know, even though they're not mentioned here, where, so, 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 to like, talk about the rapture, really does like, it's a whole different theological perspective on what we're reading, because that mean, like, the 144,000 is taken super literally. And they are Jewish believers. And, which, that's a whole thing, right? But, you know, so, so then, there's a couple of different points that as we go through the book, you'll see that like, oh, they could have been raptured here, or here, or here. So, basically, pre-trib, mid-trib, and post-trib.
Okay, so then my next.
Not necessarily, not for that reason. So, because what we see is the evidence of God working, and that the 144,000 would still be there ministering as, and then we'll have the two witnesses here in just a moment, too. So, yes.
Lots of people saved.
Yeah, yeah, it could still, still happen. So, and that's in line with, like, the rapture being a part, being in view of this, of end times events. So, yeah. But, once again, and as I've said before, I would much rather preach perseverance, right? Because how many times, and we've, we've all kind of poked fun at that, of like, oh, this is the end, right? Over the last 2,000 years, like, I think every generation, at least a group within each generation has thought, oh, this is it. This is it, this is the end. And, I don't know about you, but, man, there's a lot of crazy stuff that we're reading here. And until that crazy stuff happens, until it gets to such a point, even if the whole world is at war, which just in the last century, happened twice, even if it happens a third, and fourth, and fifth time, well, we still got a mission. We shouldn't be looking to escape it. We should stay focused on what God is calling us to do. And so, even if you see horses running around with lion heads, and breathing out plagues, and stuff like that, well, it's another day to share the gospel. That's it. And if it's another day to do that then, well, guess what tomorrow is? It's another day to share the gospel. It's the beginning of your work week. Congratulations, you have a captive audience. Especially the guy sitting next to you. So, all right, so, got five minutes left, let's hit 21. So, "And they did not repent of their murders, nor of their sorceries, nor of their immorality, nor of their thefts." All right. Boy, there is so much, so much. So, all right. "So closely associated with idolatry are the heathen practices of murder, magic arts, sexual immorality, and theft." So, three of the four are fundamental vices prohibited in the Ten Commandments. And that's Exodus, chapter 20, verses 3 through 17. They occur elsewhere in the New Testament in various orders. Romans 13, verse 9, as well as Luke, chapter 18, verse 20. Romans 13, verse 9, and Luke, chapter 18, verse 20. "Magic arts refer to witchcraft, and the use of magic potions that were a part of heathen idolatry." All right, I'll do it. So, the Greek word here for sorceries is pharmakia. Just leave that one there. Moving on, "It is listed by Paul as one of the works of the flesh." Galatians, chapter 5, verse 20. "And later in Revelation, it proves to be the method by which Rome deceives the nations." Revelation 18, verse 23. "In Revelation 22:15, those who practice magic arts are bracketed with the sexually immoral murderers, idolaters, and liars, as having no part in the new Jerusalem." Chapter 21, verse 8, for reference as well. "When people turn from the knowledge of God, the path leads downward to idolatry and immorality." Romans, chapter 1, verses 18 through 32. "Although clearly and unmistakably warned by God, unbelievers persist in their error and sin." So, these two woes of chapter nine have passed. God has met... So these two woes of chapter nine have passed, God has meted out punishment on those who do not bear the seal of God on their foreheads. It is important to remember that God's own people are protected during this time from the plagues that fall on the rest of the human race. Believers will endure the tribulation that comes from a world controlled by a different set of values, but they will never be touched by the wrath of God. Their protection is not physical but spiritual. Locusts from the abyss will be unable to harm them, and the life-destroying cavalry will sweep by, leaving them intact. This message that in the end, God will vindicate his cause, and judge the enemies of righteousness, would bring hope and encouragement to the Christian community faced by the distressing prospect of impending persecution." Any questions? That is chapter nine.
All I know is I'm changing your small group name to the Holy Huddle.
The Holy Huddle? Small group name.
I mean, like, why doesn't John, does anybody know, or is there like, any thought given to why he doesn't simply say, nor did they repent of their sins, as opposed to?
Those specifically? That's a good question, why did John specifically cite those sins?
Because I'm sitting here thinking, well, if I'm a non-believer, I'm not doing any of that, so I must be good.
Do you have that much reverence, you know? If you're reading scripture that much, so, like, as what is listed here in 20 and 21, we see a lot of what's in 21 attributed to idol worship.
Right.
A lot of the pagan cult practices, especially of John's day, of the Greco-Roman world, right? But then it even goes beyond that. And so, we see like, yeah, I mean, these are some pretty hefty things. And, how does that translate? Yeah, I mean, so, so to your point, if we were to read this, what do those things look like today? What are the idols? What is the sorceries? What does immorality, or thefts, murder, like, what do those things look like today? A lot of those translate pretty easily, others, maybe a little bit more difficult. And so there is some, you know, prayerful concern, because even for the people of God, even for those that claim Christ, like, this is a part of our own refinement and transformation. At what level are we participating in those things? I know a few years ago, I mean, I think Target started selling Buddhas, and, you know, like, oh, I wanna be trendy and cool, and you know, as a Christian, do you go and buy one and put that on the mantle? Like, for most, I'd be like, unheard of, like, what? And for somebody who's like enlightened, they're like, oh, well, you know, Buddha wasn't, he never claimed to be God, but you know, he was just the one to show the path, right? Or whatever, it's a philosophy, not a religion. And you have an idol in your house, get rid of it, you know? But like, that's a part of our own refinement, that is a cause for like repentance in that. And so, yeah, I mean, we need to like, look at how that translates for us today. Now, to your point of, well, if I was an unbeliever, I would just like, oh, well, I'm gonna not do those things, and I'll hopefully skate by, well, you still might not, or probably don't have the seal of God unless you have taken Christ, that's right. So, question?
Or just smash some graphs or go to California and.
That's right, that's right. That's right. So, yeah, I mean, so, so we are seeing a lot of these things, just pervasive in our own culture, in our own world today, 2,000 years later. So, yeah, I mean, there's plenty of opportunity to be preaching the gospel, plenty of evidence of transformation from a former way of life to a life in Christ. So we have a mission.